Okay, good evening. You can call the Schaumburg Village Board meeting to order for Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025. We are at our temporary digs at 1,000 Woodfield Road. I'd like to ask if you have any electronic devices, cell phones, laptops, whatever that make noise, if you would turn those down so that as to not disturb the meeting. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Trustee LaRosa.
Present.
Trustee Bishke.
Present.
Trustee Maday.
Present.
Trustee Sullivan.
Present.
Trustee Claire.
Present.
Trustee Patel.
Present.
President Daley.
All present and accounted for this evening. Thank you. Pledge of allegiance. Who did last time? Jane, you did. Okay. Which way was I going? I normally like to go one way or the other. All right, we'll keep going that way. Trustee Sullivan, would you like to leave us in the pledge of allegiance?
Everybody rise please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next item is the approval of minutes from April 6, 2025. Any questions, comments?
Move to approve.
Second.
So a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The approval of expenditures for $11,229,848.73. Look for a motion to approve or questions.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes or the approval of expenditures as presented. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Trustee LaRosa.
Aye.
Trustee Bishke.
Aye.
Trustee Maday.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Claire.
Aye.
Trustee Patel.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Thank you. And this evening, we have a presentation. It's my distinct pleasure to present a presentation to Rob Pelakis from Cultural Services. Thirty-five years with Cultural Services, and he is retiring.
Thirty-five.
Yeah, back in thirty, it's the retirement that's killing us. You know, it's fine, you want to put the time in, that's great, but you have to retire, you know?
Yes.
I guess. You're going to come back for something. You'll come around and visit us for something, wander around the fest.
You bet I will.
Especially the Arts Fest at Memorial Weekend, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, let me get this out of here. Okay, we had a great voluntary luncheon today.
Thank you.
You helped them see.
Great time.
And did a wonderful job. So, let me read this if you don't mind. "And grateful appreciation to Rob Pelakis, Assistant Director of Cultural Services, in recognition of your 35 years of dedicated service to the village of Schaumburg, 1989 to 2025. Best wishes in your retirement from the village president, village board, village clerk, and the staff of the village of Schaumburg." Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I just want to say I treated myself today by parking more than 10 minutes spaces, which is, I treated myself to that.
Absolutely, yeah.
I do want to thank everyone. I think anyone who sits up here has always has tough shoes to fill because the standard of excellence that has been shown throughout my tenure here since 1999 has been absolutely tremendous, and it continues to be such a well-run village. And not only for the people who live here and work here, that have worked in Schaumburg, but also work for the village itself. So, I really, it's been the best job ever. I can't imagine how lucky I was in getting this and being here this long, and just thank you so much.
It's always a sad day when you have a great employee that leaves. We've had so many over the years leave, but, you know, Rob will be back, so we'll expect to see you around. Say hello, okay? All right. Moving on. Liquor license requests, we have none for this evening. Consent agenda. The consent agenda will be read in its entirety, voted on as one motion to approve. If you wish to discuss an item further, please indicate that when the item is read by the village clerk so they can be removed from the consent agenda and discussed further under committee reports. Otherwise, all items will be approved as presented on the consent agenda in one motion to approve. Will the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Number one, correspondence. The motion would be to approve the request from League of Women voters of Palatine, Barrington, and Schaumburg areas to hold a raffle on May 10th, 2025, at Bella Napoli, located at 1540 North Rosel Road, and to waive the fidelity bond requirement. Two, proclamations. A, National Police Week, May 11th through 27th, 2025. B, Monarch Preservation Month, May 2025. C, Historic Preservation Month, May 2025. D, Building Safety Month, May 2025. Three, Engineering and Public Works Committee. The motion would be to authorize participation in the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance contract and award the Schaumburg Sculpture Path Lighting Project to F.S. Passion of Chicago, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $374,150.91. B, the motion would be to award the bid for irrigation system and waterfall maintenance to Landscape Concepts Management, Inc. of Grayslake, Illinois, for fiscal year 2526, with three optional one-year extensions not to exceed the approved budget. C, the motion would be to approve the resolution to utilize motor fuel tax funds in accordance with the Illinois Department of Transportation Resolution for the Maintenance of Streets, Highway, and Highways by Schaumburg under the Illinois Highway Code. D, the motion would be to adopt an ordinance amending Title 15, Chapter 51 requirements for private property, water, and sewer maintenance and repair. E, the motion would be to approve waiver of competitive bidding and award sole source contract for the purchase of potable water meters and accessories to Water Resources, Inc. of Elgin, Illinois, for fiscal year 2526, with three optional one-year extensions not to exceed the approved budget. F, the motion would be to approve waiver of competitive bidding and award the purchase of one ambulance to Foster Coach Sales, Inc. of Sterling, Illinois, not to exceed $486,720. G, the motion would be to authorize the village manager and village clerk to execute an agreement for the 11th year of Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago Infiltration Inflow Control Program, Phases 1, 2, and 3, with RJN Group, Inc. of Wheaton, Illinois, in the amount of $679,000, and approve the required resolution. H, the motion would be to authorize the village manager and village clerk to execute an agreement for supplemental engineering services for the Engineering and Public Works and Transportation Departments with Chastain and Associates, LLC of Schaumburg, Illinois, in the amount of $400,000, and approve the required resolution. I, the motion would be to authorize village manager and village clerk to execute an agreement for fiscal year 2526, 90 North Tiff District Project Management with Chastain and Associates, LLC of Schaumburg, Illinois, in the amount of $315,000, and approve the required resolution. J, the motion would be to reject all bids, approve waiver of competitive bidding, and award the 2025 Street Improvement Program Contract Number 2 to Plody Construction, Inc. of Hoffman Estates, Illinois, in the amount of $5,295,246.33. K, the motion would be to approve ratification of expenditures for the 2024 Street Improvement Program Contract Number 1 with Builders Paving, LLC of Hillside, Illinois, in the amount of $104,192. L, the motion would be to award the bid for pedestrian signal improvements to Alliance Contractors, Inc. of Woodstock, Illinois, in the amount of $624,642.48. Four, Committee of the Whole. The motion would be to adopt the fiscal year 2526 budget. B, the motion would be to adopt an ordinance implementing a municipal grocery retail's occupation tax and a municipal grocery service occupation tax effective January 1st, 2026. Five, Transportation Committee. The motion would be to approve an hourly rate increase to $114.25 for MV Transportation of Schaumburg, Illinois, for Dial-Aid Transportation, DART, service with a total agreement amount not to exceed $1,864,560. Six, Zoning Board of Appeals. The motion would be to approve a site plan amendment, new building and parking lot expansion, building height variation, special use for a government office, special use to construct in the wetlands, streams, and aquatic resources protection overlay district for the Village of Schaumburg Municipal Center 101 Schaumburg Court. B, the motion would be to approve a parking variation for two men and a truck, 400 to 444 State Parkway. C, the motion would be to approve a site plan amendment for building expansion, special use amendment for Internet auto sales facility, parking variation, and floor area ratio, FAR, variation for Savage Shop, LLC, 979 Lund Avenue. Seven, award of bid. A, the motion would be to award the bid for the Bodie Road Forest Main Duquesne County Excavating, Inc. of Hampshire, Illinois, in the amount of $1,015,532.50. B, the motion would be to award the bid for the 2025 Street Improvement Program Contract Number 1 to Builders Paving, LLC of Hillside, Illinois, in the amount of $2,917,808. Eight, Resolutions. A, the motion would be to adopt as Resolution Number R-25-025, authorizing the village manager and village clerk to execute an agreement for the 11th year of Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago Infiltration Inflow Control Program, Phases 1, 2, and 3, with RJN Group, Inc. B, the motion would be to adopt as Resolution Number R-25-026, authorizing the village manager and village clerk to execute an agreement for supplemental engineering services for the Engineering and Public Works and Transportation Departments with Chastain and Associates, LLC. C, the motion would be to adopt as Resolution Number R-25-027, authorizing the village manager and village clerk to execute an agreement for fiscal year 2526, 90 North Tiff District Project Management with Chastain and Associates, LLC. Nine, ordinances. The motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 25-036, establishing the Schaumburg Special Service Area 16, Remington-Basswood-Woodfield Business Center subdivision in the Village of Schaumburg, Cook and DuPage Counties, Illinois. B, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 25-037, granting a site plan amendment, new building and parking lot expansion, building height variations, special use for a government office, special use to construct the Wetlands, Streams, and Aquatic Resources Protection Overlay District for the Village of Schaumburg Municipal Center 101 Schaumburg Court. C, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 25-038, amending Title 15, Chapter 51 requirements for private property, water, and sewer maintenance repair and repair. D, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 25-039, granting a site plan amendment for building expansion, special use amendment for an Internet auto sales facility, parking variation, and floor area ratio, FAR, variation for Savage Shop, LLC, 979 Lund Avenue. E, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 25-040, granting a parking variation for two men and a truck, 440 to 444 State Parkway. F, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 25-041, adopting an annual budget for the Village of Schaumburg for the fiscal year commencing May 1st, 2025, and ending April 30th, 2026, in lieu of passage of appropriation of an appropriation ordinance. G, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 25-042, implementing a municipal grocery retail's occupation tax and a municipal grocery service occupation tax. This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Look for a motion to approve. The consent agenda is read.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve. The consent agenda is read. Will the clerk please roll the, call the roll?
Trustee LaRosa.
Aye.
Trustee Bishke.
Aye.
Trustee Maday.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Claire.
Aye.
Trustee Patel.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Committee reports, we have none listed. Comments from the public? It's an opportunity to come before the village board, discuss items that are pertinent towards the board, and if you're interested, please hold forth. We'd like you to give us your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to no more than three minutes. Okay, moving on. Culture report.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one item this evening. It is time for our semi-annual review of closed session minutes to determine whether any of them can be released. The legal department has reviewed those minutes, and has, the recommendation is that no closed session minutes be authorized for release at this time, so it'd be appropriate to move to accept that recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to accept the recommendation to not release any closed session minutes at this time.
I would say we should take a roll call.
And I'd ask the clerk for a roll call, please.
Trustee LaRosa.
Aye.
Trustee Bishke.
Aye.
Trustee Maday.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Claire.
Aye.
Trustee Patel.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Thank you. Motion carries. President's report. I have, and you've been provided memo regarding the appointment, appointments, I guess, for both the Plan Commission and the Environmental Committee. I do have one removal. I had apparently forgot to remove Jeff Maitake from the Plan Commission back on February 11th, when he was appointed to the zoning board. As you know, you basically, you only serve on one committee, so I need that done. The second one, or second part of that is Dave Utley, who's been a great chairman of the Plan Commission for a number of years, and headed that up very well. He is retiring, so to speak, at the end of April here, and so I have him down for a removal. Appointments to replace Dave Utley, so there's two members of the Plan Commission that I'm looking to co-chair, so to speak, for the chairmanship. Richard Gerber, his term would end April 30th, 2027, as the chair, and Don Watson is a co-chair, or second chair, as you might call it. His term is also April 30th, 2027. Environmental Committee, we have the removal of Thomas Radke. He has resigned, effective April 2nd, and the appointment of Mahesh.
Mahesh Prajapati.
Thank you. She knew I was going to struggle with that, so thank you very much. She's very excited about joining the Environmental Committee, and so her term would be April 30th, 2026. That is normally a one-year appointments. So I look for any commentary or a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So a motion and a second to approve. Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is Manager's Report.
I have three items to report this evening.
Three?
Yeah. We can't have this celebration until after 7:30, when Renee gets here, so I've got, I gotta fill in for a few minutes.
Can we have a stall or what?
No. With all sincerity, I want to offer appreciation to Tiana Wyler and her staff for the work they did on the Volunteer of the Year Award Luncheon today. Just really enjoyed the event, the new location at Maggiano's, and the meal, and the number of nominees. Of course, the master ceremonies was skillful, as always, but just a really nice event, and I received a lot of compliments afterwards about the efforts of the village to put on that event, so hopefully the trustees that were there and President Daley heard the same. But, Tiana, thank you. I could barely see you over there, but thank you very much for taking a risk and doing something different. Appreciate it.
Good speaker.
Yes. Good speaker. Kent was good.
He was very good. A little different, but great speaker, yes. Very good.
Second, I know it was on the agenda tonight. We adopted the fiscal year 2526 budget. I know it's a very smooth process with this board and with this group of department heads and with the staff, but there are five individuals that I think work really hard on this document and deserve to be recognized specifically, and so I'm going to do that as part of my report this evening. Paula Hewson, Assistant Village Manager, for corralling all the departments on the CIP and helping vet all of the new requests and the 2% lists and everything that we do. Appreciate your support. Lisa Peterson, Director of Finance, thank you for softening up the departments before they come to meet with me, and helping me to get through the process and then compiling the document after we make our decisions. Alex Thorpe is Assistant Director of Finance. Alex does yeoman's work, helping to pull together the document as well and sitting in all the meetings with the departments, so really appreciate his help. Andrew Buckwinkler, who works in my office, another person who sits in all the meetings and helps to really compile the document that you all received in terms of the charts and the graphs and writing the text, so he does a great amount of work to help us with that document and the presentation. And then finally, Michael Hess, who works in the Finance Department, kind of Andrew's counterpart in finance, also does a significant amount of work, helping to track revenues all year long and then helping to prepare material for the budget. So, all five of those people really deserve special recognition and really appreciate everything that they did to help the budget this year.
I'm going to jump in here a little bit and mention that this all couldn't happen without village manager Brian Townsend. If you understand the village form of government, the board sets the direction, the tone in which to go, and Brian ensures that staff kind of follows that and goes in that direction that the board is looking for. We've always asked that we have a balanced budget, and once again, that was presented. We've got actually some spare change, so to speak, that we'll have hopefully at the end of the year. We've been fortunate that that has occurred, and yet, meeting all the goals, certainly big goals that we were looking for, which has to do with the village hall, police station, and all the other type of big construction projects that are going on and getting us into this building and everything else. So, you know, you did a great job, and so we do appreciate that. job, and so we do appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
And then finally, I was hoping he would be working here tonight. Scott Longile is an auxiliary officer here with the village. He's worked for us for 16 years, but he was recently elected as a commissioner for the Schaumburg Park District, so Scott, congratulations to you.
Give a wave, Scott.
As the board knows, the village and park district cooperate on a long list of things and have for many years, so we'll look forward to working with Scott in his new capacity very soon. So, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. New business, we have none listed, unfinished business, none listed. Trustee comments and mentions? Jack, you got the suit on tonight. All right, our next step is inauguration of elected officials, so it's my pleasure to have us swear in the elected officials for this evening. I'm just taking care of that. You are, Jane. Okay.
Yes, I am.
All right.
Behind the wall.
Yeah, why don't you move, move over towards the middle more, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you. There you go. Okay. All right.
Hi, state your name.
Hi, Jane McClear.
Have been elected to the position of village trustee.
Have been elected to the position of village trustee.
For the village of Schaumburg.
For the village of Schaumburg.
County's approving the village.
County's approving DuPage.
Do solemnly swear that I was supportive.
Do solemnly swear that I was supportive.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And all the ordinances of the village of Schaumburg.
And all the ordinances of the village of Schaumburg.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of village trustee.
The duties of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Nice work.
Right.
Yeah.
Still hurts.
State your name and give it to me. Hi, state your name. Hi, Esha Pukic. Have been elected to the village of, village trustee.
Have been elected to the position of village trustee.
Have been elected to the position of village trustee. To the village of Schaumburg, county's approving the village. To the village of Schaumburg, county's approving the village. Do solemnly swear that I was supportive. Do solemnly swear that I was supportive. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Illinois. And all the ordinances of the village of Schaumburg. And all the ordinances of the village of Schaumburg. And that I will faithfully discharge. And that I will faithfully discharge. The duties of village trustee. The duties of village trustee. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, state your name.
Hi, Jack Solomon.
Captain elected to the position of village trustee.
Captain elected to the position of village trustee.
The village of Schaumburg, county's approving the village. Do solemnly swear that I was supportive.
Do solemnly swear that I was supportive.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And all the ordinances of the village of Schaumburg.
And all the ordinances of the village of Schaumburg.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of village trustee.
The duties of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
It's good seeing the three of you back. We have an excellent board here that works together very well and knows how the village operates and what needs to be done in order to keep it well-run, businesses and residents alike like that, and so I'm very pleased that you're here serving with me. Thank you. What I need now is a motion to adjourn to executive session in accordance with Section 2, subsection C.5 of the Open Meetings Act for land acquisition. The purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meeting, meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired. So motion.
Second.
Second.
So motion and a second. Will we be coming back?
We will. We will be, yes.
Okay, so we will be returning. All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee LaRosa.
Aye.
Trustee Bishke.
Aye.
Trustee Maday.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Claire.
Aye.
Trustee Patel.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. So we are going to take a brief recess. We'll be right back, so don't go away. We've got some celebration to do. All right, just bear with us a few minutes while we take care of some business.